So I was asked to share my testimony. But the thing is, when you walk with God, you have many testimonies. So I'm not sure which testimony to share. Pastor Martin said, "Share your testimony." So I have hundreds of testimonies, but I assume it's the one how I got to Indonesia and about the heart for missions that God has given me. So just to give you a background, my name's Nathania. So I'm born and raised lahir di Canada. So I've been in Canada all my life. But my parents are originally from Indonesia. Tapi, they pacharan, got married, had kids, everything in Canada. So lebih dari lima puluh tahun in Canada. So me and my siblings were all born in Canada. So my background is early childhood education. So I have, I've always been working with kids. I'm always with kids for over 20 years and I love children. And one day, I shared this last time in Rumah Ruth, for those of you who were there. I see my cousin, right? Calvin. Calvin, remember, we're cousins, right Calvin? Because of Daniel Alexander, so we're cousins. So I prayed a dangerous prayer. The dangerous prayer is, "Lord, whatever you want me to do, I will do." So Lord, share with me, whatever your will is, I will do it. So when you pray that prayer, "Lord, speak to me," you have to be ready to hear what God wants to do, wants you to do. So I prayed, "Lord..." I was working with children in a school and I felt like every day it was just the same. I wasn't, I didn't feel anything. I liked the kids, but I didn't feel anything. And what I said, "God, what do you want me to do?" He told me to quit my job and move to Indonesia. So at this time, I was around 20, maybe 22. Yeah, so I don't know the, how old many of you are, but I assume around in your twenties. So I was around 22 and God told me to quit my job and move to Indonesia. And when I asked Him, "Oh, okay, if I do that, what do you want me to do in Indonesia?" And He didn't answer. All He said was, "Move to Indonesia." So I have a choice. I have a choice. Do it or do I need to know more information? I have learned very early that when you walk with God, you don't always see the big picture. You don't know the destination. You don't know all the plans. But when you walk by faith, the most important thing is that you obey. And the most important thing is that you take a step of faith. And I take this, and when you take a step of faith, that's the only way for you to be able to see the next step. If I don't take my first step, I don't know what the next step is. So I had a choice. Okay, God told me very clearly, "Move to Indonesia," but I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I said, "Okay." So I told my parents. My parents is a pastor in Canada at the time. And I said, "Mama, Papa, God told me very clearly to quit my job and move to Indonesia." And they said, "Okay, if God told you, do it." And they're like, "But what are you gonna do there?" I said, "I don't know." So they said, "Okay, but if God told you, then go." So I said, "Okay." So I moved to Indonesia. I moved to Jakarta. The plan was one year. The plan is one year, but I don't know what to do. I arrived the first day. The first day I arrived, I went to Perskutuan and I saw some children singing. And ternyata, it was anak jalanan. And in Canada, there's no anak jalanan. So I was like, "Who are these children? How come they're dirty and their instruments are like kota-kota, kaleng-kaleng? And they're playing and they're worshiping?" And when I saw that, I was crying and crying. And I said, "What, what, who are these children?" And the person beside me said, "Those are anak jalanan." And then I said, "So they, they don't have a home? They don't have a family?" He goes, "No, they just live on the streets." But when I saw them worshiping, God, that was the first day I arrived. And God said, "That's why you're here, to be with these anak jalanan, to be a blessing to these anak jalanan." So I spent a year di bawah jumbatan di Tomang. If you're from Jakarta, di bawah jumbatan di Tomang is where there was a lot of anak jalanan. This was 2002. So I don't know, maybe many of you were not born yet. 2002. And I was di bawah jumbatan di Tomang. And every day, I would just, not every day, a few times a week, I would spend time with anak jalanan. And I didn't, I didn't feel GG or anything. I would go into their homes, young, you know, bikin pakai sang and cardus and all that stuff. And it's very dirty, very smelly, but for some reason, I just love them. And so I would go into their homes and then, at the time, I was very not like, very clueless about the dangers in Indonesia. So coming from Canada, I was very trusting. And so I bonceng, you know, bonceng, motorcycle, come on, I'm on a bonceng. And then, you know, di pinggir jalanan, there's a lot of men, you know, yang nonkrong. They just do nothing, nonkrong, smoking. And you know, they, they call, they call you, like they go, "Hey, chawe." They call me like that, right? And most people would ignore them, right? Like they're scared, they walk away. But I went to them, like if they're calling me, "Hey, chawe," like that. I went to them, I'm like, "Hapa?" And then I'm like, "Hapa?" And I was like, "Oh, disana, disana ada sambak." And I would talk to them like that. And when I did that, they all froze. Like the more, the more you ignore them, the more they call you. But if you talk to them, they switch. And they're like, "Oh, ya bu, teman kasih bu." And they switch completely, right? So I tell that, I tell that to my kids too. I'm like, "Don't be scared, don't be scared. You just go to these people that are calling you, just say hi." And then they'll leave you alone, right? So that's what I'm doing every day. And then I, I clearing Indonesia. I went ke Papua, ke Padalaman with my uncle. I went Batam, Tanjung Uban, Tanjung Pinnang. I went Medan everywhere around Indonesia. And I just saw the way God was working. And I spent a lot of times the orphanages, rumah yatim piatu. And that's when I fell in love with orphans. And because, because in Canada, we don't have like a lot of orphans like that. Any orphans, langsung, they're put into a family, like the foster family. So anytime, misanya, there's children that are left behind or their parents died or they don't have family, they're right away put with a family that's waiting. So every orphan already has a family waiting to be adopted. So here in Indonesia, there's so many orphans. So I just had a, a heart of worship, a heart of worship, a heart of love, like just to... Hold on one second, there's somebody at the door. Hold on one second.
Okay, while we are waiting for Nathania, why don't we see the picture of the whole family? I think I also can, yep. Okay, so not, not, not so many people that I know in Indonesia have like four children, not one, not two, but four. I don't know, because probably in Canada, it's quite different than Indonesia. They have like the program KB, you know, like program KB. So you, you are advised to only have like two children. But what a blessed family. And I think, my guessing is this picture is taken from Indonesia, right?
Yes, that is in Indonesia. That's a few years, that was two years ago when we first came, yeah.
Wow, it was amazing. Back to Nathania.
So yeah, so sorry about that, my son just came home. So we were, so I just had a heart for orphans. And that's when God spoke to me like this, this is what you need to do, is like take care of these orphans. And when I said, "What am I supposed to do?" Because I can't, at the time, I'm not, I can't, I don't really know the language. I'm not fluent and I didn't know what I'm supposed to do. I said, "God, what do you want me to do?" And the only thing He said is, "Just love them, just love them." And so He said, "Just hold them, tell them they have, you know, a great future. Just love them, that's it." So that's what I did. I just held babies all day. "God has a plan for you. God's, you know, going to bless you. God, God has a bright, a bright future for you." So I just blessed all these children. And so, because I loved it so much, I ended up staying another two years in Indonesia. So the whole time is Tigatau, Tigatau in Indonesia, but I moved to Surabaya. So for two years, I was in Surabaya and that's where I met my husband. So my husband is orang kupang, dari ente-ente. But I met him in Surabaya. And so when we planned to get married, I, I brought him to Canada and I sponsored him. And then, so now we're in Canada, right? We're in Canada, after three years in Indonesia, I brought him to Canada. We got married, we had four kids. And after the fourth child, I prayed again, the dangerous prayer, right? I prayed again and I said, "God, now I have, you know, after this baby is born, like do you want me to go back to work? Do you want me to stay home? What do you want me to do?" And once again, God said, "Remember the kids in Indonesia? Remember your heart for the orphans?" And I said, "Yeah, I remember, but now I have a husband, now I have four kids. I'm not by myself." When you're single, "Oh, I can just go, I can, it's, everything's okay by yourself." But now it's five other people. And God said, "I have given you a heart for these orphans." So move to Indonesia. And then I said, "Well, it's gonna be hard now. Like if this is really your will, talk to my husband, talk to the children." And I said, "I don't think I can do this, I don't think I can move." And God said, "Well, it's up to you. You asked, I answer. So it's up to you if you want to obey or not." So many times, you know, in our journey, our faith journey, when we ask God, He does answer us, but sometimes, many times, it's not the answer we want to hear. So when we don't get the answer we want to hear, we kind of say, "I don't think it was God. I don't think it was God." But inside, we know it's God. So I said, "Okay, Lord, if this is really you, then talk to my husband, talk to the kids and lead me, just lead me." The first point I wanted to share today, when you walk by faith, when you walk with God, is you need to include Him from the beginning in every single step. Every single step, include God. That's not just, just not like, "Oh, I wanna move to Indonesia. Is this your will?" It's not a big thing. I'm talking about every little thing in your life, you include God. Even when you drive, when you are driving to work, when you are driving to school, you pray and include God. "God, this is the small steps that we start with. Lord, I wanna go to school, lead me, lead me. Help me to go follow your path, whatever you want me to do." Every day, if we always go the same path and we pray that prayer, there will be certain days that you just have a feeling, "I'm gonna turn left today instead of right, I'm gonna go the other way." And you just have this feeling because you included God. And when you obeyed God, like you, you get this, this feeling of, "I don't know, I just feel like I have to go this way today." And then you find out later, "Oh, there was an accident in your regular way. There was an accident and it could have been a two-hour delay. You would have been late, you would have missed your test and stuff." And you're like, "Wow, God really protected me from that accident, you know?" Just little things that you always include God. "Lord, help me to go, to know where to go." Even for shopping, you know, for shopping, God will speak to you. "Lord, lead me." When we go someplace or we go to outlets, or we were driving around America, we always pray, "Lord, lead us to the right place that you want us to go." He could be protecting us from a shooting in a mall. He could be protecting us from something dangerous, you know? There's always a plan that God has for us. And when we include God, He will direct our path. In everything direct, He will direct our path when we include Him. So that's the first thing that I have always learned in my life, is to always include God from the beginning. In Proverbs 19 verse 21, it says, "Many are the plans in a man's heart, but it is the Lord's purpose that prevails." We can plan things, it's okay. Like, "Lord, I wanna go here, I wanna do this, but is this your will? Is this your will? Like I have a plan to do this, I wanna go here for vacation. I wanna go to Indonesia, I wanna go to China, I wanna go here, should I go there?" And you will feel God's leading, you know? So in every little step, we include God, we include God in every little step. The second thing that I've learned is to always list, learn to listen, learn to listen, because God speaks in different ways. So when I was, when God told me to move to Indonesia, I said, "Lord, okay, I'm going to visit Indonesia first. And Lord, show me who I should talk to, who I should meet. I wanna use my time effectively." So I was going to visit for three weeks in Indonesia and I didn't know where to go, I didn't know who to see, I didn't know who to talk to. And I said, "Lord, if this is your will for me to move to Indonesia, show me who I need to talk to." And God gave me a name. He said a name, I don't know if many of you know Gikap Ebe in Bandung. His name is Petrus Nawawi. And God just said, "Petrus Nawawi." And I haven't, I know him, but I haven't seen him for like maybe over 20 years. And God very clearly said, "Petrus Nawawi." And I'm like, "What? Why him of all people?" So I said, "Okay," but I just obeyed. So I called him up. I said, "Hi, Papa Petrus, you probably don't remember me, but I met you 20 years ago and God gave me your name." And I don't know why, but I'm just obeying, so I call you. "I have a heart for orphans, but I don't know what to do, I don't know where to go." So it kind of sounds silly, this, this conversation. I said, "But God gave me your name." And then He says, "Oh, okay, let me give you another name. I'm gonna give you another name." And He gave me another name, Patoni. And I'm like, "Oh, okay." He goes, "Just contact Patoni." I'm like, "Okay, I don't know who this Patoni is, but I just follow, right?" So I call up this Patoni guy. And I said, "Hi, Patoni, Papa Petrus gave me your number. I'm going to Indonesia and he told me to meet you." And he says, "Okay, when do you arrive?" I said, "Thursday night." He goes, "Okay, let's meet Friday morning." I said, "Okay." So I went to Jakarta. It's Friday morning, I met Patoni and I shared my heart. I have this heart for orphans, I don't know where to go, I don't know what to do. I brought four kids with me, so my husband didn't come. It was me and four kids and I shared my heart to Patoni. And Patoni's wife was there and she listened and she said, "Oh, you know what? There's a place in Bandung and it's called Rumah Ruth." I don't know if any of you know Bandung and Rumah Ruth. It's an orphanage, it's a house for Ibu Hamil, young Diluanika. So, so this lady said, "Oh, there's a place called Rumah Ruth in Bandung. You should visit there. I think your vision, your, your plans, it matches them." And I said, "Oh, do you, have you been there?" And she said, "No." And I said, "Oh, do you know anybody there?" She said, "No." And I said, "So why would you say Rumah Ruth?" She goes, "I don't know, I, I just think you should go to Rumah Ruth." I said, "Okay." So that was it. That was my first conversation, that's it. The second day in Jakarta, Saturday, I went out with some friends. I went out with some friends and they asked me, "What are you doing here?" So I shared again, I have a heart for orphans and just sharing things. And he said, "You know what? There's a place called Rumah Ruth in Bandung, you should go there." This is the second day in Jakarta. And then I said, "The person I met yesterday just said Rumah Ruth." And he goes, "Oh, yeah, you should go Rumah Ruth." I said, "Oh, okay, do you have the number?" He goes, "No, I don't have the number." I said, "Okay, so, okay, you're saying Rumah Ruth, there must be something, right?" But Bandung was the, on my itinerary, on my schedule, Bandung is the last stop. So I was gonna go different cities first. The next day on Sunday, I met a friend, an old friend. We're just talking. And she's like, "What are you doing here?" Again, I share my heart with everyone I meet, I share. I feel like God wants me to move to Indonesia. And she said, "There's a place in Bandung, it's called Rumah Ruth, you should go there." And then I said, "Have, have you been to Rumah Ruth?" And she said, "No." I said, "Do you know anyone that works there?" She said, "No." I'm like, "So why would you say Rumah Ruth?" And she says, "Oh, because I'm orang Bandung and I've heard a lot about this place, so you should go there." I said, "Okay, this is the third person in a row, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Rumah Ruth, Rumah Ruth, Rumah Ruth." I said, "There must be something about Rumah Ruth." But then, for three weeks, I traveled Indonesia, right? I stayed in different orphanages. So I took my four children and we would sleep in orphanages. And I would put babies on their lap, so they would all hold babies. And they didn't wanna move to Indonesia, right? And so we were like traveling around Indonesia. And then finally, one stop, we went to Surabaya. In Surabaya, they were all holding a baby. And then one of my children, one of my children put, put his baby down and ran out, ran out of the room. And then when I found him, he was crying. And he said, "I need, I think we need to move to Indonesia. We need to move to Indonesia because we need to help these babies." And I said, "So you, do you wanna move to Indonesia?" He said, "Yes, I wanna move to Indonesia." And then so I asked my other kids, "How do you feel?" And they said, "We wanna move to Indonesia to, to help these babies." And they all agreed to move to Indonesia. I said, "Okay, so we have to still visit other places, we'll see, we'll still pray about it." And then when we got to Bandung, the last stop, we went to Rumah Ruth. The last stop, we went to Rumah Ruth. And when I went there, the kids were excited, they loved it. They said, "Are we moving here?" They love Bandung the most from everywhere, they really like Bandung. They said, "Is this where we're moving?" And then I said, "Oh, I don't know, maybe." And I, I talked to the staff there. And I said, "Do you need any help here? You know, I, I have a heart for orphans, do you need help?" And they said, "No, we're okay." And I said, "Oh, you don't need help, okay." So I said, "Maybe, maybe it's wrong, maybe it was just a coincidence, people kept saying Rumah Ruth." So I said, "Maybe I'm not supposed to move here." But then the next day, I met some, some old friends in Bandung and they asked me again, "What are you doing here?" And I shared again about what God is doing in my life. And they said, "You know where you should go is a place called Rumah Ruth." So this is, after I went to Rumah Ruth, right? This is the fourth person. "There's a place called Rumah Ruth, you should go there." And I said, "Oh, I did, I did, they don't need help." And then he said, "They said kata syapa, they don't need help, right?" The husband went to make a call to somebody and then the wife left to make a call to somebody. And I was just left there sitting, I don't know what they're doing. The husband called one of the board members of Rumah Ruth and the wife called the founder of Rumah Ruth and they're having two different conversations. And they said, "Okay, they need help." So it turns out that when I went to Rumah Ruth, the founders were not there. What, the husband was getting a kidney transplant in Jakarta and the wife was there too. So I didn't meet them. So I was just talking to any staff who doesn't know who I am, right? So it turns out that they do, they do need help. So I was, that was a Sunday. And then on a Monday, I went back to Jakarta. And Tuesday, I went back to Canada. So they said, "Monday night, can you meet Nathania in Jakarta?" And the founder said, "Yes, I'll meet her." So I shared my heart on Monday. And then the founder, her name's Davi, she said, "You know, we've been praying. Our vision in Rumah Ruth is to stop abortion. That's our, our mission is to stop our abortion. So we are saving a lot of these babies. So we are, you know, accomplishing our mission, we're, we're stopping abortion. But now, because we're successful at this, now there's so many babies and we didn't think about now, what do we do with the babies? So now we're koalahan with the babies. So our vision is to help Ibu Hamil, but now we have so many babies and we don't know what to do with the babies. And we've been praying for God to send someone to help with the babies." And I said, "That's my heart, like that's what I wanna do, is to help with the babies." So she says, "This is what we've been praying for and, and we can see that God has called you in Canada to come here." So the whole process actually took two years of this whole going back and forth back. But it was two years, so it was pretty long. And it took two years for my husband to finally agree. And when the, the thing is, when, when you can see God working and when you can see that God has amazing plans for you, you gotta be also aware that the devil is not gonna be quiet. When God wants to do something big in your life, the devil is gonna be trying to stop it. Because God wants to use you and the devil knows it, the devil will try to stop it. So a lot of things happen throughout our process. Right when my husband said, "Okay, I'm at peace, let's go to Indonesia, let's move to Indonesia." I said, "Okay, so I can book the ticket?" He goes, "Book the ticket." So I booked the ticket to Indonesia. And then when we were a couple of days before we were gonna leave, it was COVID. COVID suddenly hit and the Indonesia closed. All airports closed, every country closed, we couldn't leave, right? And everyone was in school online. So we already planned, we already registered my children to, to be on, in school in Indonesia. But they said, "Everyone is online, so your kids can start online." I said, "Okay, so I have four kids, right?" So they said, "Okay, so just start online for school, but we have to follow Indonesian time." So in Canada, my kids went to school jam sembilan malam sampai jam tiga pagi. In Canada, right? Jam sembilan malam sampai jam tiga pagi. So every month, they asked us, "Are we moving here?" I'm like, "Oh, yeah, COVID's almost finished, almost finished, we have no idea." And the border was still closed. Every time, it seemed like, "Oh, yeah, it's an opening, there's an opening, we can go now." Something happened, like for example, "Oh, no, you need to get vaccinated." Okay, ngajadi, we cancel the ticket. We got vaccinated, we book a ticket. "Oh, no, the Indonesian border closed again. Canada's open, but border, Indonesia's closed." We cancel again, we book again. "Oh, now the children have to be vaccinated." Okay, cancel again, book again. It was constantly like that. And in these two years, when we were planning on moving, throughout the whole time, I shared this with many of you before, a lot of people, everybody was asking me like, "Okay, this is a sign. If you keep booking, canceling, booking, canceling, this is God telling you that you're not supposed to go." And I said, "No, no, I believe God wants us to still go." And he goes, "But there must be a reason." And I said, "No, it's okay, it's okay, like God's timing is perfect, it's okay." And they said, "You know what? Where are you gonna live in Indonesia?" And I said, "I, I don't know." "Oh, where are your kids gonna, what are your kids gonna, how are you gonna get everywhere?" I said, "I don't know. What are you gonna do for a job? How are you gonna earn money? I don't know. Where's your husband gonna work? I don't know." Everything that everybody asked, I, my answer is, "I don't know." And so I went back to God. I said, "God, everything that everyone is asking me, I keep saying, 'I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.' Am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong, right? Maybe, maybe I'm the one yang salah dengar." I said, "God, am I wrong? Because I don't know all the answers." And God, and that's when God said, "It's okay, you don't have to know, I know." And God said, "You don't have to know the answers, but I know the answers. All you need to do is obey, just do it, just obey and go." I said, "Okay." So that was my answer now. "I don't know, but God knows. I don't know, but God knows." So I would just change my answer, right? Before, I'm like, "I don't know, I don't know, I don't know." But now it's, "I don't know, but God knows, right?" So I just obeyed, right? And then throughout the whole time, when it's like, "Cancel, go, cancel, go," we, our faith just kept building. It just kept, but it wasn't discouraging us, it was just like making us more excited. And throughout the waiting period, when the waiting period is long, sometimes you get discouraged, right? You get discouraged and you're like, "Why is it taking so long?" But God's timing is never too late, never too early. And finally, my kids were in online school, skolah jam sembilan malam sampai jam tiga pagi, for 15 months, lima belas bulan. They finished a whole year and started a second year of school. 9:00 PM sampai 3:00 AM every night. So we followed Indonesian time. So in Canada, we followed Indonesian time. So we are fine, we're fine with that, my children didn't complain. Finally, it was time to move. The borders open, we're all vaccinated, we brankat, right? We left September 29th, September 29th, 2021. September 29th, 2021, we flew, we arrived September 20, no, no, it was 28. September 29th, we arrived at 11:50 PM, 11:50 PM. Our visa expires September 30th. Our visa to enter Indonesia expires in 10 minutes. God's timing was exact. If our flight was delayed, we cannot enter Indonesia. So we entered ten minutes before our visa expires. So we entered Indonesia and God just provided everything. Um, God provided us with a place to stay. We didn't know where to live. Um, God provided a place to stay. When we didn't know how to get anywhere, goja, goja, go, go car like that, God provided a car. Somebody just came and said, do you have a car? We're like, no. He's like, oh, we have a car, just use it. Yeah, the extra car, just use it. So we have a car. How about school? How are you gonna, how are you gonna pay for this? God provided. How are you gonna do this? God provided. Every single thing we needed, God provided. God already provided it before we know we need it, right? So throughout the whole process, we learned to, our family learned to change the way we pray. So we did not pray like, Lord, give me this, Lord, help me this, Lord. We don't pray like that. Now we already realize, God already prepared it. Tuhan sudah sudah akan, right? So now we just have to receive it because it's already prepared. We just receive it. So we change our prayer, we say, Lord, thank you for the car that you have prepared for us. I don't know where it's from, but we thank you for the car that you have prepared. Suddenly, somebody comes, hey, do you need a car? Here's a car. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the house that you have prepared for us. We got a house. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for, you know, finances that you have prepared for us. It was prepared. So many things, miracle after miracle after miracle, until I told my mom, I said, I don't feel worthy of this, like, I don't feel like I deserve this because it, the blessing is too much. Like, it's to the point of God is blessing us too much. You know, and I, I said, Mama, I don't, I don't think we deserve this. And my mom says, it's not what you think you deserve. Your only job was to obey and God will honor that. And when I said, when, when, um, I prayed, I'm like, okay, Lord, where are we gonna get finances? How are we gonna live? Like, the, the six of us, me and my husband and four kids, how are we gonna survive financially? And God just says, you work for me. So I'm, I can provide everything, I have already provided everything. And it's already been two years and God constantly just keeps providing. Um, you know, a lot of people, a lot of people ask me, how do you know? How do you know it was God's will? And that there's a few things that I, I've been like meditating upon. And, uh, one is, uh, one, one thing that how I knew is God is, what does it say in the Bible? Does your plans or what God has said to you, is it according?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Wow. Jadi lagi seru-serunya ya, kita lagi mau dengar karena mungkin When I was reading the Bible and stuff, there's so, I know that I'm in, in the plan of God, right? That's just one thing. And to, throughout the whole process, God was, God was, uh, giving me peace. Another way that you know that it's God is when you feel peace. A lot of times that you feel like, oh, I wanna do this, but I don't know, I'm confused, I feel scared. That feeling of not, uncertainty is normal, right? But when you know it's the will of God, you just feel a peace, even though you don't understand. I don't know how this is gonna happen, but I feel peace. I don't know, I feel peace. And that was another way that I knew it was God. And the other thing is, in the verse, um, Proverbs eleven fourteen, in the multitude of counselors, there's safety. When I talked to people that I respected and cared about their opinion, who knew me, who knew my heart, and I asked them what they thought, they were all very supportive, they're like, yes, go, just do it. They were not like, there are so many people that say a lot of things like, why would you do this? They, in Indonesian, a lot of Indonesians say chari masala, right? Chari masala? They said, in Canada, school is free. In Canada, education is free, uh, sampai SMA. So from TK sampai SMA is free, education. Healthcare is free, kare, sake, karuma, sake, everything is free. And they're like, why would you go to Indonesia where you have to pay for school? You have to pay for healthcare, you have to pay for everything? Why would you do that? You, doesn't make sense, life in Canada is better. And so there's so many people that said, you're, you, it's wrong to go. But when I seek the counsel of people who are close to God, who know the heart of God, they were all like, go, just do it, just go, just go. It's okay, anytime I, I was not sure, but what about this? They said, it's okay. You know, God has taken care of it and there's safety in the council of, uh, in the multitude of councils. Um, you know, the saying, oh, just follow your heart, follow your heart. So, but then, yeah, that's not right. Because if you follow your heart, it's all based on emotion, you know? You, you just follow like, oh, I feel like it, okay, do it, I feel like, let's do it. But that's not how it works. It should be follow the spirit, you know? It should be follow the spirit, not your heart. Because when you follow the spirit, oftentimes, it's not what the heart wants. Many times when God tells you to do something, it's not really what you wanna do. And many times, it doesn't make sense. You know, so when God says, move a family of six to Indonesia with no job, with no finances, with nothing but go, it doesn't make sense. But all we need to do is follow the spirit, you know? So what I've been learning is like, it's not about emotions, it's not about how you feel about it, but it's about following the spirit, the leading of the Holy Spirit. And when you follow and you walk by faith, the verse Philippines, Philippians four verse thirteen is, is very powerful. And my God will meet all of your needs, will supply all your needs according to His riches and glory in Christ Jesus. When we walk by faith, it doesn't mean we see the whole picture. But it just means we can see the next step. And every step we take is a piece of the puzzle. And it's a beautiful puzzle, the end result is a beautiful puzzle. Um, yeah, just to, just to encourage all of you who are, you know, maybe in missions or thinking about it or not sure or confused, you know? It's okay to make mistakes, it's okay. When you walk by faith, it doesn't mean you know one hundred percent, it's okay. But when you include God and you feel this is what God wants you to do and you, it turns out to be a mistake, God can straighten your path. God will turn it around because he knows you included him and you just tried your best. Um, the example, the example I gave is, um, my cousin. My cousin in Canada, she was offered a job in Jakarta, to, I don't know, one of the big schools in, uh, in Bogor, one of those, I don't know, Ipewah or something like that, in, in Bogor. And she wanted the job, but she's like, I don't, I don't know, it's a really good job, but I don't know, I don't think I should take it. And I said, it's up to you, you just pray about it. And she says, I don't know, I don't think I should take it, so I think I'm gonna say no. And then I said, okay, just say no, right? So she, she, she prayed about it and she just didn't feel right. So she said no to the job in Jakarta. After she said no, she nyasol, she, she regretted it, she's like, ah, you know what, I should have taken. I said no based on fear. I've never been away from family, I've never been away from home. I believe this is from God, but I already said no. And I know it was because I was scared, so now I lost it, that's it. I lost it because they said, if you say no, we're gonna offer the job to somebody else, so it's too late. And I told her, you know, when you included God, you know, God will honor that. You said, God, I wanna make the right choice, I feel it's no, but I don't know, so I'm gonna say no. So she said no to the job. But I told her, if that job is for you, no matter what, it's for you. God already prepared it for you, even if you said no, it's for you. And she said, no, they already said, if you say no, we will give the job to somebody else. And I said, if the job is for you, it is for you. And I just said that to her, she's like, okay. The next day, they called, the school called her and said, uh, Jennifer, I know you said no, but we really want you. Is there any way you can reconsider if you can come? Because we, she's like, yes, yes, I wanna come, I wanna come. And she, that was her walk in faith. And she learned that even if you make a mistake, if you already include God in the beginning, God will straighten it, you know? God will straighten it, it's okay, like, with us in our, in our, in our journey. Oh, should I book a ticket now? I, I think I should book a ticket, it's a good deal, I book a ticket. Oh, ternyata, the border closed, oh, sala, okay. It was a mistake, I thought it was right, it was a mistake. The only way you're going to learn in your walk of faith is if you take the step. You know, if you don't take the step, you don't know, is this right or wrong, right? So when you walk by faith, it doesn't mean it's a hundred percent right all the time. Walking by faith is, there will be mistakes. But you have to learn from it, okay, I was wrong. Next time, I think I have to do this or next time I have to do this. But it's a learning, it's a learning process. So, yeah, the last thing I wanted to share is my favorite verse, Ephesians three verse twenty. Now unto him that is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we could ever ask or think, according to the power that works in us. So the things that we think God is gonna do, God has greater plan than that. And you know, the, the other day, um, there was a pastor that prayed, prayed for me. And he said, you know, God is doing amazing things for you, but there's so much more that you have not seen and you cannot fathom. It, it's too much for you to fathom. So don't think that, okay, I obeyed God, I moved to Indonesia, that's it. No, there's so much more, I don't know what, what is more? But he was saying that, don't limit God. Okay, God wants me to be a missionary in China, that's it, stop. You just move to China and that's it. No, there's so many things. And I believe that every person that you meet, you are impacting their lives. You are impacting their lives. And that is a domino effect. When you impact somebody's life, they are going to impact somebody else's life. So I just wanna encourage all of you that, you know, as you walk by faith, as you continue with your journey with God, you have to understand that what he has planned for you is exceedingly abundantly above what you could ever ask or think. So just imagine that, okay, is this it, God? No, there's so much more. So I just wanna encourage you and I just wanna bless all of you and thank you so much for listening. God bless you all.
Hi, VisiSi families! Hope you are blessed with the wisdom of Allah. Remember, the Bible says, berbahagia lah orang-orang yang mendengar dan menaati cuman Allah. So together, let's try to put these God's word into practice. Aku juga mau encourage untuk kita bisa sama-sama follow VisiSi Instagram dan juga subscribe to our YouTube channel supaya kita bisa terus diperlengkapi dan bertumbuh bersama dalam menjadi semakin suka dengan Islam. Bagi teman-teman yang membutuhkan dukungan doa, counseling ataupun mencari komunitas untuk bertumbuh, you are very welcome to GMA on Instagram atau juga melalui email pada alamat yang tertera. See you soon, ya VisiSi families, God bless!